Gonna be four moments out to propose.
Was it the United States of America in this republic?
Hey, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Luke Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, I keep turning my microphone, sorry. Citizens comments opportunity for those to address the council for up to three minutes.
Good evening. Beth Loudon, I live at 12330 210th Street West, Lakeville.
Good evening.
So, is this appropriate time, I know you have a lot going on, to talk to you about the final order on the Southwest Study Area for the Alternative Urban A U A R Study?
Sure.
Okay. So, back in August, and I'll give you a copy of this as well, we handed out and met with the City Planning Committee. I'm not sure that you were given a copy of this. Based on the report that I just read, it indicates that there was not any citizen comments. That's probably true between October 21st and November 20th, but there were many comments to the City of Planning Committee, as well as written documents and statements from the citizens. So, with that said, the report, I found that several different things I want to bring to your attention. And it'll be real quick. The first one is, why is this study referring to 390.3 acres? The developer doesn't own 390.3 acres at this time. So, I know you won't be able to answer these questions now, but I would hope that Tina in her time can answer these questions. The second question is, is that the city indicated that their proposed action document, that they reached out to the State Department, but they do not reach out to the United States' Fish and Wildlife Services. So, we'd like that to be considered and reach out, because Solberg is under that control, and they border that property. The third thing is the traffic control. It talks about in the future, the city and the county will need to work together regarding the traffic and the issues on County Road 70, but it was not addressed in this report, so it doesn't really give it a conclusion. The fourth thing is that the document states that, on page 52 on response, that there wasn't any citizen comments during that period of time. That's probably true, but I would hope that all of our other comments were brought forward. Number five, the wetlands and the watershed. It talks about it being under the jurisdiction of the Vermillion Waterway, but it also, from our properties going west, it actually flows west into the Credit River water stream as well. So, I would think that that study would need to include both wetland studies. The habitat, it talks quite a bit regarding the habitat back there, which supports what we have been brought up in August. I learned a few things, and I didn't realize our turtles, they're back there, as well as the rusty patched bumblebees that are on the historical endangered species list. So, those are things. And in the report, it recommends that you don't disturb the land between April 15th and September 15th. So, I would hope that as you do your planning, that you would look to that and would request those timelines to be considered. In addition, on the trees, they talk a lot about the trees, and again, recommend not to disturb the trees between June 1 and August 15th. So, I'm hoping that those considerations will be looked at. Then the school district, again, right now, the school district's trying to put together a 10-year facilities plan, looking at asking the taxpayers to support a $250 million bond referendum, in order to be able to keep up with what the city's been doing in approving homes. This is a tall order, and I'm not sure. And then after that, would have to follow an operating levy to operate those buildings for those additions. So, again, I just ask that the City of Lakeville has been very proud about how fast you're growing, but the infrastructure hasn't caught up to you yet. So, again, I'd just like to caution you as to, you had a great 2040 plan, you're trying to push it forward, and it's causing a lot of issues. We've overbuilt on the east side of 35, and now we're trying to push the west side, and we haven't caught up on the east side yet. So, thank you, and I'll give you each a copy.
Thank you, Ms. Loudon.
Thank you. Yep.
I've got two.
Good to see you.
Hey, Beth. You ended up with two to say.
Okay, any other public comment?
Mayor and City Council, good evening. I'm Bob Erickson, 19081 Indale Drive. I'm here this evening, after learning, on short, very short notice, where we're at in the A U R process. And very quickly, the handout I've just given each of you this evening. First of all, it identifies the agenda, which is tonight on consent. I want to emphasize on consent. Final order for the Southwest Study Area, Alternative Urban Area Review, A U A R. So, very quickly, I'm going to just cover the things that I think are deficient in the document. Deficient, meaning, they might be in process, but some of the items, in fact, have not been accurately or correctly addressed. First of which is the natural resource areas, and that document does not identify Solberg Waterfall Production Area. And I thought that's a huge gap in the document, and it is not, the Solberg Waterfall Production Area is not identified, 114 acres, with any map in this document. So, it's not identified, and I think that's a significant natural resource that the community has enjoyed since 1994. The D N R has identified blending turtles and rusty patched bumblebee. I'm familiar with those. And in that context, the document states that they're going to start grading in the spring of 2027, and the D N R may be not in favor of that, based on the sensitivity for the blending turtles and the rusty patched bumblebee. Scott County, I referenced the Credit River. There are three stream flows out of the area that go directly to Credit River. One is along County Road 70, one is behind the property owned by Mark Weber and the Loudons, and the third is very interesting, the water that comes from the natural resource area, Solberg Waterfall Production Area. And portions of the Leonard's runs straight to the west, and to the, again, into the Credit River watershed. So, we have three areas from this area that run directly into Credit River watershed, and not as denoted by the Vermillion River watershed. Transportation impact study is, would follow this process, or would follow the start of the A U A R process, but it's significant in the context that it will also deal with and identify the access and ingress and egress points along County Road 70, which the residents brought up previously at the Planning Commission and the City Council. And all of that dates back to August 7th. Metropolitan Council is, it's somewhat confusing, but many of the residents, including myself, reached out to the Metropolitan Council in the first week of October, and were informed that they were not approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. There are indications within this document that it's in process, but there's other elements in here that says it's been approved, but that the next Comprehensive Plan Amendment would have to meet a new standard. It's not clear, and it needs to be clarified for the residents in that regard. Wetland delineation is...
I have one minute, Bob.
Wetland delineation is in progress and has not been completed. The D N R, the City of Lakeville, have tree preservation recommended plans and ordinances in effect. And the last comment is, it's very disheartening for all of us who presented information, provided verbal comments with concerns, not in opposition, but with concerns, and now it says that there was no citizen's comment. I'm just, we're disheartened by that, and I'm hoping that this document this evening will become part of the official record, and that the minutes will indicate that, as I'm hoping Beth Loudon would expect the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay. We'll now move on to additional agenda information. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6D on the consent agenda, this is approval for the purchase of a outdoor video display and scoreboard at Grand Prairie Park. Staff is asking, did that be withdrawn tonight? And we'll bring that back at a future date.
Okeydoke. And with that, we'll move on to our first presentation, swearing in and badging of firefighters, and we'll turn it over to our fire chief, Mike Meyer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councils, members. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing the Class of 2023 Rookie Group for their successful completion of two years of probation with the Lakeville Fire Department. And I'll ask them and their family members to step forward, as I call their names. They're all from Fire Station 2, so Cory Blanchard, apparently his wife and two kids left. Oh, they're back. Malik Cam, and Brian Monahan. And as they come up, just for them to successfully complete probation, each firefighter earned their Fire 2 certification, hazmat op certification, emergency medical certification, and emergency vehicle operation certification, totaling about 450 hours of training over these past two years. Obviously, you've heard me in the past that we front-load that at the very beginning of their, when we hire them, they go from training from roughly September all the way into March of the following year to complete all of that, and then we have additional training that we do internally as a department. So, with that, we'd like to do the oath of office and have their family member badge them, so I'm going to spin around. Have you raise your right hand, firefighters, and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter of the City of Lakeville, in the County of Dakota, and the State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. And if your family member wants to pin your badge on? Always a trick without drying blood.
That's right.
Thank you for allowing us this time to acknowledge our members and their successful completion of all of their training and their probationary period. Will stand for any questions that you may have, or?
Got no questions, but just a comment, congratulations, listening to your training. You folks have worked really, really hard to get to the place you're at, and the work is just beginning. So, you'll have plenty of training and plenty of practical opportunities, but I just personally appreciate your commitment to our community. This is going above and beyond, and you are going to be sacrificing a lot to be part of the fire service, and it's cool to see your families here, and that support is so important. So, congratulations, well done.
Yeah, I'll echo that, but also just say, thank you for what you're doing, even outside of the firefighter role, Brian, getting involved with the fire relief right off the bat. I get to serve on that board with him, and so I just know that, in addition to the work you're doing as a firefighter, you're serving the community in other ways. And so, I also just want a second to the families for your service, and to the kiddos, the service that you don't even know you're doing yet, but it's very much appreciated. So, thank you. And it's a big night tonight, you have a big department meeting, so thanks to everyone for your extra time tonight. Just echo my colleague said, but we're so grateful for your service to our community, and also the support from your spouses and your family, so thank you. If you want to come up, we could like to shake your hand before we send you off.
You give us a couple of minutes?
We will give you a couple of minutes, yep, no problem. Well, now move on to Item B, our Park and Recreational Quarterly Report, and I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Joe Macy-Archin. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to give you the quarterly report for the Parks and Recreation Department for the months of September through November. And we'll start out with administration, and a picture of Grand Prairie Park. So, Grand Prairie Park construction continues to move along. We worked pretty quickly here this fall to get things wrapped up and get as much completed as we could before the winter weather set in. So, steelwork, as well as concrete seating and the walkways are underway, those are coming to completion here. Grandstand construction will be continuing throughout the winter, but sod for the grandstand and the artificial turf are all installed, so those are put to bed for the season. Our parking lots and curbs are approximately 90% complete. We left some of that unfinished, just to complete some of the other construction on site, to make sure nothing got dinged over winter with snow removal. The splash pad was fired up. Minnesota Department of Health was out to do an initial walkthrough, so that is shaping up to be in good shape here come the spring. And the majority of the amenities will be opening here in the summer of 2026, so we're excited to get that project wrapped up. East Community Park Phase 2 continues to move along. We've shared the master plan with the council, but I did just want to remind council, some of the amenities that we anticipate will be coming online next year, as we start construction of that project. So, East Community Park will include a large shelter and restroom building. It'll include Lakeville's first community garden plots. We're building a trailhead in conjunction with Dakota County, as well as a new dog park and new trails. That project will be going out to bid here in winter, and we would anticipate construction starting in 2026. Keep in mind, that's the final project tied to the 2021 Park Bond referendum. The Lake Marion Greenway planning continues to move forward, so plans are at approximately 90% complete at this point. Several open houses were held this summer, most recently in November. Phase 1 of that project is slated to begin here in 2026, and again, will run from downtown Lakeville into Ritter Farm Park. When complete, the Lake Marion Greenway Trail would be approximately 20 miles long, connecting Savage, Farmington, and Murphy-Hanahan Parks. Spiglas Park Phase 2 was one of the neighborhood parks that we worked on this year. That project is substantially complete, there'll be a few finishing touches here coming in spring, but that project included new bocce ball courts that we use for a lot of our recreation programming, pre-K play element, you actually see that in the picture there, multi-purpose athletic deck, as well as half basketball court with pickleball striping. That project, as I said, is substantially complete, we're excited to get that opened back up for the neighborhood here in spring. And the Park System Master Plan continues to move forward as well. We recently wrapped the community-wide survey, which had over 1,300 responses. Over the last few weeks, we've moved into our stakeholder meetings, and some of those included some of our youth athletic associations, advisory committee members and staff, and as well as representatives from Dakota County Parks. And moving into park maintenance, the park maintenance staff have been busy this fall. They actually were working on the replacement of the Dakota Heights Hockey Rink. This is a new process for our rinks, but a great product, ultimately led by our staff, and that included the replacement and full reconstruction of the rink boards, new netting, and then we had the surfacing replaced, as well as new trails installed. We're excited to get that opened here for the community this winter. Juno Trail also received some repairs. We did, staff repaired some of the stairs along Juno Trail, and we'll be doing some longer-term planning, looking at some replacements coming to that here in the future years. And as we run into fall, staff is always busy putting the system back to bed, and that includes herbicidal and fertilizer applications, tree trimming, mowing and mulching, ice rink inspections, and then our park building winterization. But a busy time for our park staff, and we thank them for all of that work. And moving on to recreation. Recreation held several special events over the last quarter, including the Whodunit Hike, that is done in conjunction with the South of the River Recreators, but 76 amateur detectives joined us for that, to help solve this year's mystery. We hosted the Haunted Forest Festival, that's at Steve Mashad Park, that's an annual event. This year, over 1,400 wristbands were sold. We did a little bit of a different process with the wristbands this year, to make it an easier process for the community to purchase, and in turn, increased revenue by about 44%. Fall programming recap for recreation, we increased our programming this fall by 40%. Some of those new programs included cookie decorating, nature homeschool, the fall music together, and expanded rev sports offerings, sitting at just under 300 participants in the last quarter. And our rentals, rentals actually increased over 12% over 2024, so a little over 57,000 in rental revenue, which is a 14% increase in revenue over '24. For our buildings, we're sitting at over 85,000 in rental revenue for the buildings themselves, a 45% increase over 2024. That's due in large part, though, due to the longer season, our first full year with John Henen Pavilion being online, but also due to the fact that we shifted to the two rentals per day at the Pavilion. We also now have a long-term renter over at Steve Mashad Park. And upcoming skating season, so as I said, staff is getting ready for that. Over 50 seasonal staff have been hired to help manage our 10 rink sites, that's 20 rinks in total, and we look to, assuming things stay on track, we'll be flooding starting here this week. That is a multi-week process for us, so you'll have to keep an eye on our social media, we're not ready to open those rinks yet. And moving on to the Heritage Center. Heritage Center had several special events and trips in the last quarter. Lakeville luncheons had 153 participants, our off-site trips, 39, and bingo, sitting at 59.
All right, what's Polish bingo?
You know, I actually had to ask. I knew you were going to ask, so card bingo, essentially, so. Membership status is sitting at 1,615 current members, 59 new members, I'm sorry, 54 new members, signed up over the last two months, and that's 269 that are holding fitness passes, 324 for cards and games, 67 with education and book club, and then 105 with hobbies and craft passes. And two substantial facility upgrades happened over the last quarter at the Heritage Center, one being the installation of the same electronics locking system that we've installed throughout the rest of the system. That's a more user-friendly, more secure process for us. And then also, the installation of the new roof at the Heritage Center. Throughout all of that, though, programming continued as normal. And the Metro Dining Cards, which is the fundraiser that we do annually to help support the 50-plus community, is ongoing again. Those Metro Dining Cards are available for purchase at the Heritage Center and at City Hall. This year, $30 per box, and you receive discounts to 138 restaurants. And moving on to the Art Center. Fall program recap, so over the last three months, 55 different program sessions were offered, 297 pottery spots were filled, our painting classes filled to 71% capacity, and we had 49 special workshops that filled, and year-to-date program revenue sitting at over 338,000. And year-to-date, our facility visitors, and I always love this number, kind of breaking down how many people have been at the facilities on site, but for our events tied to the Art Center itself, so for our own programming, sitting at over 2,000. For our rentals, those are events that we do in conjunction with a lot of the theater groups, over 14,000 tickets sold. Our art classes, sitting at almost 1,500. Gallery visits, that is a hard one to gauge, by the way, 47, and the open studio visits, sitting at over 600. And in September, the annual Lakeville Art Festival was held. This year, 107 juried artists, over 60 volunteers, 275 youth art participants, six artists held demonstrations with over 360 participants, and this year, an estimated 600 community members participated in this year's community art project, which was titled Light Quilt, and that is available to view at the Fine Arts Building. And for our performing arts, again, a busy season or busy quarter here. So, year-to-date, though, sitting at almost 200,000 in ticket revenue. Tuck Everlasting, sitting at almost 1,300 tickets sold. A Hunting Shack Christmas, which is our community theater program, that sold 910. There was a shift in how we did tickets for that, though, so it's actually our second-highest grossing show, at over 13,000 in revenue. And then Mini Nutcracker, this year, held two or three performances. Those always sell out, they're hugely popular, and at over 14,000 in revenue and 700 participants. And the department-wide, we've got several upcoming events. Empty Bowl Fundraiser, which is this week Wednesday. We've got the Santa Secret Store, December 6th, the Holiday Craft and Bake Sale, December 6th, the Illumination Walk coming January 9th, the Youth Fishing Contest, February 7th, and Ritter Fest, February 21st. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
The Ritter Fest, I think, is later this year, right?
It is a little later.
And hopefully, we get some snow, that's good.
Yeah, we spread those event, this year, spread those events out a little bit, so, yep.
Questions, comments? Well, I just want to say, it's very good and fulfilling to see how many people are doing things at the Art Center and the parks. I mean, the numbers are very strong, so kudos to your team, so thank you.
Much appreciated, thank you. This year, $30 per box, and you receive discounts to 138 restaurants. And moving on to the Arts Center. Fall program recap, so over the last three months, 55 different program sessions were offered, 297 pottery spots were filled, our painting classes filled to 71% capacity, and we had 49 special workshops that filled. And year-to-date program revenue sitting at over $338,000. And year-to-date, our facility visitors, and I always love this number, kind of breaking down how many people have been at the facilities on site, but for our events tied to the Arts Center itself, so for our own programming, sitting at over 2,000. For our rentals, those are events that we do in conjunction with a lot of the theater groups, over 14,000 tickets sold. Our art classes sitting at almost 1,500. Gallery visits, that is a hard one to gauge, by the way, 47, and the open studio visits sitting at over 600. And in September, the annual Lakeville Art Festival was held. This year, 107 juried artists, over 60 volunteers, 275 youth art participants, six artists held demonstrations with over 360 participants. And this year, an estimated 600 community members participated in this year's community art project, which was titled Light Quilt, and that is available to view at the Fine Arts Building. And for our performing arts, again, a busy season or busy quarter here. So year-to-date, though, sitting at almost 200,000 in ticket revenue. Tuck Everlasting sitting at almost 1,300 tickets sold. A Hunting Shack Christmas, which is our community theater program, that sold 910. There was a shift in how we did tickets for that, though, so it's actually our second-highest grossing show at over 13,000 in revenue. And then Mini Nutcracker, this year, held two or three performances. Those always sell out, they're hugely popular, and at over 14,000 in revenue and 700 participants. And department-wide, we've got several upcoming events. Empty Bowl fundraiser, which is this week Wednesday. We've got the Santa Secret Store, December 6th, the Holiday Craft and Bake Sale, December 6th, the Illumination Walk coming January 9th, the Youth Fishing Contest, February 7th, and Ritter Fest, February 21st. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
The Ritter Fest, I think, is later this year, right?
It is a little later.
And hopefully we get some snow, that's good.
Yeah, we spread those event, this year, spread those events out a little bit, so, yep.
Questions, comments? Well, I just want to say it's very good and fulfilling to see how many people are doing things at the Arts Center and the parks. I mean, the numbers are very strong, so kudos to your team, so thank you.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item Six, our consent agenda. Anything you want to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, a reminder, Item 6D is being withdrawn, and then Item 6I is a new two-year labor agreement with our Teamsters Union, which covers public work, staff, streets, fleet, and utilities and parks, parks maintenance.
Very good. Council, anything that you'd like to pull for further discussion or to, can I have a motion? Councilmember Walter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item H.
Item H. Okay, anything else? Okay, that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items D and H.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus Items D and H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all who's in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. We'll now take up Item H, resolution abating the reassessment for removal of a hazardous building, and Councilmember Walter, I'll let you.
Yeah, we don't have to obviously go through the whole presentation again, but we had this discussion at the last meeting. We, as a council, were not able to come to an agreement on an amount for reassessment, so this is essentially then wiping that amount off. It's basically forgiving the entire amount. And I would like to encourage some discussion on that and reconsideration, if that's at all possible, but if not, I just would like to vote against it. In my view, this is, we have fiduciary responsibility, this is $50,000 of taxpayer money, and at a night when we're approving a levy increase. And I just, I don't feel like it's, I understand the circumstances and the purchaser had some issues, but in my view, that's something that needs to be adjudicated, and is not for us to put up taxpayer dollars to resolve the situation. So that's my rationale here, so.
Okay. Council, any other?
I'm just unsure what he expects us to do from here, because you came up with a motion, I came up with a motion, we went nowhere, so I don't know where we're supposed to go. I agree in theory with what you're saying, but I don't know where to go when we had two motions that failed. So I don't know. Unless you want to put something else out there, I don't know where to go with it.
Councilwoman Lee?
I mean, where we sit right now is that we are, the question is reimbursing funds that have already been spent. And ethically, I don't feel good about trying to come up with a plan that we did not come up with last week. Had we needed more time to come up with something, we should have tabled it at that point. It does not feel right to do that now. Secondly, since that meeting, we have come up with a more transparent way to show what assessments are on the bill since then. We've been in conversation with the county, and there are going to be some procedural changes that make it much more clear going forward what assessments may have been cleared prior to forfeiture to the state. So I think what the situation highlighted was some issues with the process, which have been resolved. And while that is not necessarily fair to the city, I think it is unfair for the individual to go back to and try to assess those funds at this point. So I would vote no for any further discussion on this item.
Okay. Ms. Bermal?
I, I mean, on the night that this came up, I held the position that the city should be able to recoup those costs. That motion was voted down, the other motion failed. I, though, I'm not sure what, if there even is a next step, or what that next step would be. You know, and I understand what Councilmember Lee was talking about, that this did bring about some change. I think that's good, but I still feel that the city should not have to have borne the full financial burden of the assessments. But I just don't know what the next, if there is, even is a next step.
It's honestly something I'd have to look into. I think you'd probably have to go through another hearing process notice and redo the whole process again, if that is an option. But I believe that the property owners have now made some decisions based on the actions before, so this was intended to be a cleanup measure, so.
And do we, at one point, they had a contract to sell it. Do we know when the closing for that was? And I'm guessing they didn't disclose to new buyers, because we didn't take action?
Mayor, Council, I don't know of a closing date. I just know that they have asked us after tonight to provide a copy of the action tonight so that they can provide it to their potential buyers.
So they can provide it?
They would like to be able to make any buyer known that this assessment is not hanging on the property anymore.
Any further discussion or any motions?
Well, the motion would be to, for the resolution as it stands, right?
Yep.
I do not have that pulled up at the moment. So then I would move to approve the resolution abating the reassessment for removal of a hazardous building.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, scene on roll call, please.
Bermal?
Yes.
Walter?
No.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Helyer?
Aye. Okay. Okay, moving on to Item Seven, or Item A, Kyla Crossing Second Edition Preliminary Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And I don't know if we've got the applicant here. Yep, come on up.
King Mayor and Council, my name is Rick Osberg. I'm with Hill Engineering in Burnsville. I'm here this evening with Bill Ryan, owner of 1101 Homes, Ryan Real Estate and Topaz. Brought preliminary plat for Kyla Crossing Second Edition, 14 years after, or 15 years after the first one. But it's been a neighboring property. After speaking to some of the neighbors or residents last week, it sounds like it's a flourishing network of homeowners over there. We're glad to bring this one before you for consideration, and I'll stand for questions after report.
Okay, very good, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Goodroad.
Good evening. Yes, before you this evening is the Topaz LLC submitting of applications for Kyla Crossing Second Edition, which includes 18 new single-family lots. The property is just west of Apava and north of Kenwood Trail, across the street from Ames Arena. So there is a couple of actions regarding land use and zoning. So right now, the property on the right side of your screen displays the land use. It's currently guided medium and high density, and the applicant has requested that the property be re-guided to low-density residential to support the single-family proposal. With that, then we have a zoning text amendment to change it from RM2, which is shown at the top of the screen, to the proposed RST2 to support the single family. So those two actions. There is property to the south, and you can see it on the plat. This is right-of-way, that is then when County Road 50 was widened, there was right-of-way that was purchased by the county, and also stormwater ponding that was conducted. That area is guided for public. When we update our 2050 plan, we'll absorb that and indicate that as ponding area on the land use map, but it is owned by the city and will be used for ponding in perpetuity. So that part is being left out of the request. The specific request was just on the residential property. The preliminary plat includes 18 single-family lots. It's a very straightforward preliminary plat, will extend Iris Way to Apava with a sidewalk on the north, and there will be a stop sign that will be located on Iris Way as you're approaching Apava. And that was one of the things the residents requested. Here is the grading plan, there are two ponding areas, this one will tie into the existing ponding that was created to support County Road 50 extension, and then a stormwater pond on the north side of the property. The applicant is providing a nice buffer of landscaping through trees, a variety of trees planted along the south boundary abutting the ponding area, just to provide a little bit of buffer to County Road 50, as well as along Apava, in addition to the trees that are required per lot. There are trees that are being removed and through our new ordinance, but it does not approach the threshold, so there aren't any new trees that are required specifically because of the tree inventory. Planning Commission did hold their public hearing. That took place on November 20th. And again, there was one comment at the public hearing, really requesting or asking about traffic control or their stop sign. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval, and I would stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Council, any questions, comments? Ms. Bermal?
Quick question about the access to that new street. Is there any changes to full access to that point? Is it going to be three-quarter or?
It'll remain full.
Remain full?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Yep.
Just one thing, as I looked, and it's that intersection, it's that crossing. As this becomes populated and you have kids, I could see, I could see that becoming just a place where they want to cross. And it's more of a comment about just keeping an eye on the pedestrian traffic there and then applying our pedestrian policy if we reach thresholds. I think it's something we need to pay attention to.
Good point, thank you.
Yep, I'd agree. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a motion. Ms. Volk?
I move to approve, one, a resolution approving the Kyla Crossing Second Edition Preliminary Plat, two, a resolution approving comprehensive plan amendment, and three, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and adopt the findings of fact dated December 1st, 2025.
Okay, very good, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I would just say, I think this makes sense for, to kind of match this around an area, so I'm happy to support it. With that, I'll take, roll call, please.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Helyer?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Very good, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Item B, a public hearing on ordering improvements and preparation of the plans for the 2026 214th Street Reconstruction Project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. The project, so tonight, we'd like to discuss the purpose and need for the project, review the project's scope, we'll talk about the financing, how we're gonna pay for the project, proposed preliminary assessments that we're proposing to go with this project, talk about the schedule, where we go from here, and then hold the public hearing. So project itself is, again, it's 214th Street West, which is just east of Hamburg Avenue, north of County Road 70. It's about 600 feet long road cul-de-sac. And this street is part of our street network, and is rated on a frequent basis through our pavement management program. The street is rated at a 25 OCA, or overall condition index, in a scale of 0 to 100, being 102 street. A street that's 40 and below is considered poor condition and considered in the reconstruction area, so this street falls in that category. Based upon that information, this street was included in the 2026 CIP. So a little background again, as Councilmen recall, the feasibility report for this project was ordered on July 21st. We did have a neighborhood meeting on November 5th, got some comments there, and then we did call for the public hearing for tonight's meeting on November 3rd. So just briefly, the street, again, is in poor condition, so the plan would be to reclaim the pavement, which grinding, grinding up the pavement, using that for, and recycling it and using that for the class wire or the gravel. Portion of the roadway, unfortunately, the pavement section is very thin, based upon the geotechnical report that we have completed, so we'd like to add about a foot of sand section to this roadway to beef it up to more commercial standard, collector road standard. So that item is included in the cost of the project. There is some curb and gutter, some little curb and gutter that's out there currently. There is some areas that we'd like to replace, sections that are replaced with new curb. And then the east section of the roadway does not have any curb and gutter on it, and we would like to add curb and gutter to that east side as well. And then the road would be crowned, there's no crown out here, so the drainage is kind of all over the place, we'll crown the road, facilitate better drainage. The water main on 214th Street is in fairly good condition. We haven't reported or documented any water main breaks over the years, but we would like to replace the bolts, the valves that are out there, that's the first thing that typically goes with older pipe. Replace that, and then put some corrosion protection on the water main itself to try to extend the life of the pipe. We'd also like to add a new valve to the water main that goes to the water tower. This would help in, if and when the water tower needs maintenance, that we're not gonna be impacting the lots and the properties in the adjacent area. So that's a maintenance issue going forward. The storm sewer system out here is poor, so we'd like to add some storm sewer enhancements, catch basins out here to, in conjunction with a curb and gutter, to enhance the, and improve the stormwater system in this area. So moving on to project financing, currently, the project estimate is, for the project cost is $577,000. Financing for this project would come from many sources, namely, the pavement management fund would fund $262,000 of the project. Assessments to the benefiting property owners are currently estimated $158,000. Water operations would fund the water improvements, the new water improvements that I talked about, and then the storm sewer infrastructure fund would fund the new storm sewer improvements that would be included in the project as well. This street, again, is proposed for reconstruction, so it falls under our assessment policy, where we assess 40% of the street portion of the project and existing storm sewer back to the benefiting property owners. The new water main and the new storm sewer improvements would not be associated with that assessment calculation. So again, with the assessment policy, we would typically, for a commercial area, would assess per front footage. Under this case, the front footages are kind of all over the place, so staff is recommending that we use a per-unit basis method, so every, all units would be assessed the same amount. This is consistent with what we do with, or have done with our street reconstruction projects as well. So this is just the overview of the parcels that are proposed to be assessed. There are five parcels in the assessment roll, and actually, two of them are city-owned. So with that, with all the assessments that we talked about in the calculations, we're looking at about a $31,687.94 assessment at this time. And again, this is just the estimated amount at this time. So the final assessments would be based upon the bid results that we receive if this project moves to, moves forward. So we'll take the lowest responsible bidder and recalculate the assessments based upon the cost that that contractor submits. We are looking at assessing, the assessments would be considered a separate hearing, obviously not tonight, in March of next year, with the order of the contract. So we did, again, have a neighborhood meeting, received several comments on the project, mostly favorable. We are, some of the comments received included stormwater drainage issues, which we are planning to address with this project. There's a few comments on overgrown trees along the corridor, we're gonna be taking care of that as well. And then adjusting one of the driveways, make it a little bit wider, adjusting the radius to facilitate truck the radius to facilitate truck movements into that, into that property. So, project scheduled, if the project moves forward, tonight, December 1st, we will work on the preparation of the plans and specs, finalizing those documents over the next couple of months, December and January. Month of February would be bidding out the project and having a bid opening on February 18th. The assessment hearing right now would be scheduled for March 2nd, and then construction would start in April, right after road restrictions. And we'd like to try to have this project done sometime in June before the First Center So, next steps, again, like to hold a public hearing and then consider a resolution ordering improvements and authorizing the preparation of the plans and specs. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Counsel, any questions? Councilor Lee?
Thank you. Director Omi, just one clarifying question about the parcels that will be assessed. You stated that there are five, two of which are city, which means that the city is being assessed that same equal portion-
Right.
-on top of what the city is already financing for, for this project, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other? Yeah, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open the public hearing if there's any comments from the public about this project. If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. With that, any further discussion? Councilor Bermal?
I make a motion, I move to approve a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for the 2026 214th Street Reconstruction Project, City Project 26-01.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, scene on, roll call, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Helier?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item C, a public hearing on the adoption of a ski, ski fee schedule by ordinance, and I'll have our finance director kick this off.
You have to really start that, don't you?
I think we need an extension on there for Paul.
I know, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Approval of this ordinance tonight will result in the approval of changes for our permits, planning and engineering fees, and connection charges and other development fees. Approval of the summary publication of ordinance requires a four-fifths approval vote, and approval of the resolution will result in the revisions to an approval of our schedule of fees. State law does require that the establishment or modification of our fees to process land use applications must be established by ordinance after the public hearing is conducted. The fee schedule is reviewed annually to ensure that rate structures accurately reflect the cost of services provided, the proposed 2026 budget anticipated adjustment of these certain fees. The proposed changes are consistent with the discussions that we had with council at the work session on October 27th. We had two minor changes since that October 27th work session. One of them was updating the park shelter rental fees, based on direction from council to compare ours to other nearby cities. And then, we discovered on the utility bill late payment charge that the statute had a limit on that, so we brought that one back down slightly, so. Those are the only changes from the work session. With that, I'll take any questions that council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. I believe we're going to have any comments, and so with that, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any further discussion about the fee schedule? Ms. Mary Volk?
I'll move to approve the ordinance adopting fees and summary publication of ordinance, and move to approve the resolution adopting the fee schedule.
Yeah, okay, very good. Is there a second?
There's always been two there.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Helier?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Very good. And now, we will have you stay up there for our public hearing, truth and taxation for the 2026 property tax levy and budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So, this, as you well know, is the last step in our statute-guided process with our levy and our budget. Tonight's purpose is to present the proposed, proposed budget to the public, receiving public comment. We also adopt the budget and the levy for the coming year, and we, I will go over the changes since the preliminary budget in September that was adopted. And just a reminder that the purpose tonight is not addressing market values of individual properties, those market values are determined by the county and as part of their spring process. So, a big thank you, first, to staff, council, and administration for all of your support and, and efforts in reviewing these budgets. There's a lot of work that goes into it, starting in May. Spring and summer, staff are preparing the budgets based on the city's service needs and our existing resources. August is the time then council's reviewing the budgets at the work sessions. September, we adopt that preliminary budget and levy. And then, in November, the county sends out those estimated tax notices based on those preliminary budgets adopted in September. And then, tonight, we are doing our truth and taxation, and hopefully, adopting the budget and levy. So, there's factors impacting everyone's property taxes, as you well know. There's the city, county, and the school portions, as well as those smaller districts, the special service districts. The changes to the market value affect the property, and there's a whole timeline, it's usually a two-year lag on how those, what the sales are based on, that come, that the county arrives at those market values. So, there's valuations that go out January 2nd of 2025. March of 2025, those property value notices are mailed to the owners. There's then, the owners' opportunity, have an opportunity to appeal their valuations with the county assessor, that goes from March to June. And then, the Board of Equalization meets to hear those valuation objections in June. So, for Lakeville, the changes to our taxable market value, our tax base, we had a 3.4% valuation increase across the board, 2% new construction added to that, so a 5.4% increase in our taxable market value. And our city's median value home increased by 3.9%. So, when we're looking at that new construction, the community growth does account for roughly $257 million of the property valuation, and it generates roughly 842,000 in property taxes. So, our valuation growth on our existing properties is roughly 3.4%, or that equates to $436 million. This chart is just showing you how our new construction market values have been over the last several years. We had those, the big construction growth in 2022, 23, 24. It has tapered off a bit, but as you can see, still well above our 2019 levels. This chart is showing you the makeup of that new construction, so as you can see, residential is a large portion of our growth, but we've also had, you know, notable industrial and apartment growth as well in these last few years, so that's been nice. And then, looking at our tax capacity rate across the years, we did have an all-time high of a 41% back in 2013, and as that came down, as our tax base growth absorbed the costs of our levies and our debt. And now that we're adding more services, we're taking on the park referendum debt, it's inching up a bit more now, so we're at a 33% tax capacity rate. What that means for the tax levy dollars that we need to provide the services and run the city, we've got a total of $51,986,475, that is for all the funds. This is a 6.4% increase from our 2025 levy. We were able to bring it down from our preliminary September adopted, which had a 7% increase. Dollar-wise, it's roughly $3 million increase, and it is providing funding for our operations, our capital maintenance, and our debt service. What this chart is showing you here is the change from last year's levy in each of those funds. So, our general fund, it's a change of roughly $1.2 million, or 2.5% of our increase. Pavement management, it's only going up $350,000. Park and trail improvements, $550,000. Building fund is a big jump, a million dollars for that. We've got a lot of work that's going into our buildings that we're having to do this, increase that levy. And then, a combination of our equipment fund, our techni, technology fund, and communications, those all added up to an increase of $650,000. Our debt service funds, our existing debt service funds are actually dropping off, so that levy portion lowered by $648,000. And our park referendum debt service funds are now leveling out, so it's only a $20,000 increase there. What this means for our median value home for 2026, that median value of $467,000, they would see a $75 annual increase for their city portion of their taxes. And the average taxable market value increase across the city for residential was 3.3%. If we're looking at the commercial properties, looking at a $1 million commercial property with a 4% valuation increase, their increase would annually would be $316. 264 of that increase is the market value change. And the commercial properties saw an average taxable market value increase of 3.4%. This chart is just laying out for you the different valuations for residentials, so if you're looking on the left-hand side, if the house is $250,000, or let's look at the $450,000, and they had that 3.3% market value increase, their city annual bill, the city portion of their taxes will go up $65.50. So, this is just helpful, giving people in all those different market valuation brackets an idea how their tax bill is affected, just from the city's portion. And Lakeville continues to hold the lowest tax rate in the major cities in Dakota County, so we are at the lowest at 33%. This is showing what that median value home would pay at our tax rate. So, on the far-left side of this graph, they're paying $1,500 a year. If they were in Eagan, they would pay $1,770 a year, so that's an increase of $240. If we look at that same Lakeville median home in Apple Valley, it's roughly $600 more that they would pay if they had Apple Valley's tax rates. So, some of the changes that happened, happened since that preliminary adoption, we did reduce the general fund levy by $300,000. There were increases in fire and police aid, part of the fire aid was the city portion of the fire relief that will now be shared, the 9%, so that played into it. We have $319,000 increased revenues there. We also increased some charges and services and miscellaneous things by roughly $190,000. The expenditure changes for the general fund, the same offset for the fire aid that goes to the Relief Association, part of that $319,000 revenue, the offset is giving back to the relief, their $143,000 increase. And then, we had also some reductions in other contractual and IT costs by about $13,000. Just breaking out for you the revenue sources, you can see, so our total revenues in the general fund, $47 million. 72% of that is our property taxes. License and permits make up about 8%, intergovernmental revenues make up 9%, our charges for services are at 7.5%, court fines, interest earnings, miscellaneous are at 3%, and then we have the small transfers in of $130,000. Looking at our, our general fund ratio, fund balance ratio that we have in our policy is to hold 40 to 50% of the next year's expenditures, and we are in that target range, we are at the top at the 50% projected for the end of 2025, and projected for 2026 year-end with the budget as it would be adopted. Looking at our general fund expenses by function, total expenditures roughly $46 million. Public safety is our largest group, as it is for most cities, 52% of our budget is public safety. Police is 38% of it, and fire is 14%. Then, we get down to public works, which is 15%, our general government services at 19%, parks and recreation at 14%. Some of the increases for the general fund that we incorporated in the 2026 budget, we did add three positions, so an information technology specialist, a facilities technician, and a park maintenance, too. Those are all full-time positions. We also did have a 3% cost of living adjustment, and the step increases for the rest of the staff. And then, we had the new Paid Family Leave Act that came, comes into play January 1st of '26. We are using some fund balance for the one-time expenditure of the comp, 2050 comp plan update, so we're using $175,000 of our fund balance for that. The increases in our utility fund budgets, we did, we do have the 2026 Street Reconstruction Project in there, there's ongoing major maintenance, no new debt for the utility funds, and some rate increases due to our wet year in 2025, which gives us lower revenues. Liquor Fund continues to do well and help offset and keep our property tax levies low. It's Kia Cooks in its fifth full year, hard to believe, probably for a lot of people, that that store's been there for five years already. We did keep sales conservative for 2026. There's debt in there for the Kia Cook and the Galaxy stores, but we're still looking to, and this is a large increase from last year, 2.3 million of the transfers out of the liquor fund to help support those other city funds that we would otherwise have to have a levy for, so continue to cheer around the liquor stores and their sales. So, this breaks down what that 2026, those transfers out of the liquor fund would support, so it's helping pay some of the debt service also, like on the police station bonds, which end in 2032. And the debt service fund, like I mentioned, the Kia Cook store. The equipment fund, we've increased that transfer, so that's up to 1.5 million out of the liquor fund into the equipment fund. Technology is getting $36,000, and then, the 4th of July fireworks will get $30,000 again. And just leaving some additional resources for people, if they want to be more informed about our lovely property tax system, that is very complex, so there's just some websites for that. And then, also for the resource, resources for property tax relief, and where people can go for those programs. And with that, I will open it for questions from city council.
Counsel, any comments? Yeah, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing if there's any comments. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, counsel, any comments? Ms. Marie Lee?
Well, I just would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that this budget is the culmination of sound fiscal management by the whole organization. And I think the only way we can get to the, to the lowest increase in the county is through foresight, sound foresight, good use of the funds that are being, that are provided to staff for the various uses. And then, our finance committee, who's advising us on, and ensuring that we're maintaining our financial sustainability policy. So, to the staff, to the committee, Director Stahl, just thank you for, for your work on this, and to all the committees that really, this all feeds into the, this massive project to figure out what should be the tax levy the following year. So, I'm proud of where we're at right now, I'm glad that we're lower than the 7% that was in the preliminary budget, and that we continue to be the lowest tax rate in the county, and the, I believe, still the lowest taxed county in the state, at least it has been our historic place countywide. So, so just thanks to the whole organization for your fiscal responsibility.
Ms. Bermal?
I was, I echo what Councilmember Lee said, I, one of our responsibilities is to set a reasonable levy, and I think this really hits that mandate, to just be reasonable in our budgeting. I agree. Thank you to staff, thank you, Julie, for your hard work on this. This is, you know- This is, you know, for us, we have some meetings. It's about a three, four-month process. For you, it's almost the entire year. And you're really paying close attention to the taxpayers' dollars, to how we can best spend. And I look at this budget, and I mean, I'm going, this is just, this is solid, solid money being spent on things that are going to help the community, and there's no fluff there. So I just really appreciate the work. I agree also, the original 7% was better than I had expected, but this coming in even lower than that shows that you're just looking at it right to the very finish. And I think this is a reasonable budget, and I'm in full support of it, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Councilmember Walter?
I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I agree with both Councilmember Lee and Bermal's comments, just my appreciation to the staff and all the work here. You know, one of my frustrations since joining the councils, when you see it from this side, the property tax system, people get a mailer that has a percentage on it, and that's real money that comes out of their pocket. But for me, trying to, you know, put this in context of the growth of government, you really have to use a per capita type model just to see, are we, you know, with the population growth, where does this levy stack up? And my, you know, we don't do a census every year, so I know some of this is which numbers you pick, but my back-of-the-napkin calculations show that this actually is a modest decrease when you factor the population growth in. So I applaud, again, the work that's been done on this. Again, I want to acknowledge, though, I mean, there is real pain people are feeling with property taxes, largely because of other layers of government as well, with some of the costs that the state has passed back down to the local level. And I think that's important to acknowledge, and I appreciate the work that we've done to help manage that, so thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion? Yep. Go ahead.
Move to approve three resolutions. One, adopting the 2026 property tax levy. Two, adopting the 2026 budget. And three, authorizing the 2026 purchase and disposal of vehicles and equipment.
Second.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? I'll just close and just say, again, my gratitude to you and all the department heads for putting together the budget. I think one thing that stood out to me, I obviously would echo what you guys said, but the fact that we're investing in some infrastructure with cash instead of borrowing, I think is important, especially as we're still growing, but definitely slowing down and not having to borrow for every pavement management project and building fund, those type of things, I think is really important. So I think we're really setting ourselves up for some long-term success. And with that, I'll take a motion, or a roll call.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Hellyer?
Aye. Okay, very good, thank you. Unfinished and new business. Okay, seeing none. Announcements, our next work session is next Monday, December 8th. That's a change typically, we have that on the last week, but we changed it because of Christmas. Our next city council meeting is December 15th. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to a closed session. Councilmember Walter?
I move to close the meeting to conduct a performance evaluation of city administrator Justin Miller pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A.
Okay.
Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll adjourn into closed session.